Good evening and welcome to the Eastline Board of Education for October 18th, 2021. I'll call the meeting to order. And for everyone who rise, please rise. Joining me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite. At this point, the board of the board of the public comment, committee individual, certainly matter of district. Address the board. Nope, I don't see anyone else. The green light is on in that mic, I think it is.
I see it. Yes, it is. So, good evening to the board, my name is Elizabeth Mondello. My address is 12 Black Oak Drive, Eastline. My topics tonight are the Equity Institute Audit and Freedom of Information Act. My background is in science, I was a lab scientist for 15 years. There we work data, results, testing. We never implemented any changes to the process without thorough review and actual tests and analysis. The Equity Institute audit that was recently conducted does not present data. Instead it presents narratives and selective comments. I do not find these results to be adequate to make any decision. The Equity Institute only started in the end of 2019. That's a year and about nine months ago. So they don't even have any long-term data to show that their recommendations are even working. So I have a Freedom of Information Act request. On September 3rd, 2021, the Eastline School System paid the Equity Institute $6,000 in taxpayer funds for teacher and staff professional development training. I am hereby requesting under the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act, the full video of that training. I expect you to locate this video and provide it to me. Eastline School System paid the Equity Institute $15,000 in taxpayer funds for an equity audit of the Eastline schools. I'm requesting the actual data from that audit. My request is for the actual answer to each question separated by four, parent, board, student, and owner. This information can be provided to me at my address, I provided that, an electronic copy could be provided.
Can you send that to me too if you don't mind? Do you have it right there? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Alright, thanks. Hey, anybody else want to address the board this time? None, I will go on to approval of some minutes, we have the minutes from our October 4th meeting, which is a regularly scheduled meeting. Anybody would like to make a motion on those minutes?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes at our October 15th regular board meeting.
Fourth, 14th. Oh, at.
Regular board meeting.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Kate, was that Kate?
That's Jill Karini.
Was Jill, oh, okay, ooh. Switch seats.
It's a test.
Okay, any corrections, modifications, changes, Lee?
On the motion to approve the proposed K board recognition award packet, it has all board members listed under pro and then also con and abstained.
Yeah, you abstained, right?
I did not, no.
But it lists every person passing.
And not every person did pass it. So there's.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah. It just didn't line up.
Okay. That first of all?
Yep.
Okay, right, anything else? Okay, so as with the amendment, all those favorite motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Who abstained? John, Barry. Okay. And then we have the minutes from our special meeting, which was held right after the regularly scheduled meeting on October 4th. It was basically a board retreat. So, I'm taking a motion on those minutes.
I would like to approve the minutes of the special board meeting of October 15th. October 4th.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, that's Jill seconds it. Any corrections or modifications to those minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the minutes don't reflect that Barry went home early. Usually we always write down when someone leaves early. And they don't reflect that, of course, I don't, I didn't write down what time he left, because I wasn't the secretary that night.
Okay. For the.
It was.
Yeah.
It was more to begin.
Most of the rest.
Okay.
That ended up with nine, 19.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
It said nine eighteen.
What, nine eighteen?
I suppose so.
Yeah, in the minutes, it was nine eighteen.
Oh, sorry.
But, yeah. I'll be, I can adjust it with Jack. Okay. Okay. Anything else? Okay, all those favorite motions signify by saying aye. Opposed? Staying? Okay, those are approved. Special reports, I don't think we have a select representative. No, we don't have here. We do have high school student representatives on the Zoom order, so Sashi is. Are you? Sashi and Brendan. You want to start, Sashi?
Yes, I will take it away. So, um, Spirit Week is, like I said last time, is now coming up next week. And pep rallies will all be held outside. Um, homecoming date is Saturday, the 30th, and masks are required for the entire time indoors during the dance. And a little update on the clubs, I know that there's been some difficulty and with meeting as such, but I think clubs are finding their way through it, some are meeting after school, um, over Zoom at night or during our flex time in advisory, but I know that there's still some concerns about that. Um, with not having enough time to thoroughly meet as a select unit. So that's all I have, and then I'll pass it over to Brendan.
Uh, thank you, Sashi. Uh, tonight, I'm just giving the sports update. So, uh, this Thursday, we're going to have cross-country ECCs at Norwich Golf Course. Um, this Saturday night, we will be having our varsity boys soccer home game versus NFA. And, um, this Friday night, our boys' football team is going to be playing Daniel Hand at home. So, um, those are our main sports events happening this week. Um, I believe that there is a volleyball game going on currently versus Fitch at the high school. Um, but yeah, that's, that's our sports update.
Great. Any questions, uh, for high school representatives?
Kate? I do. I'm, um, thank you guys for your report, I'm wondering who coaches you on helping you to present to us as a board?
Um, we, we don't necessarily have a coach. Uh, we, we tend to work, uh, on our own and we tend to, uh, really try and get the ideas from the entire high school student body. And we organize those on a Google Doc on our own, but we do occasionally check in with, um, Mrs. Kelly and, uh, the other vice principals to, uh.
I was just talking and I was completely frozen, that is my bad. I was just talking to myself, so I'm glad that Brendan took it over. Yes, yeah, that's pretty much, yeah, we've met with Ms. Kelly a couple of times to bounce off some ideas, but we get most of our information from around the school, talking to students, just being involved in the school in total and senate meetings and club meetings as well, so.
Okay, I, I guess I would appreciate, uh, I appreciate what you're doing and, and, you know, I love to hear your voices. I would appreciate, I guess, think more of a scope and more of a range of different things and dig a little deeper. I feel like, I, I feel so blessed that we're getting the Viking saga now and hearing what is, or reading what is written and hearing the voices that way, but, um, I, I just really like to hear from the, from the students themselves and what the demeanor is and how people are feeling and that kind of thing.
Yeah, the, the clubs thing was one of the main things, but I know that that's a really big topic with, um, Ms. Kelly and the administration to try to fix, but that was just a little piece of what the students were feeling about it. But we know that that's being handled, so.
And previously, I know that there was difficulty with finding, I don't know if you call them mentors or advisors, so people who would help with those clubs, but that's been, how is that going, I guess?
Are you referring to like not having enough advisors to handle the clubs?
What I heard previously, right.
I haven't heard anything in that sense of, um, lack of advisors, but, um, I think it was just mainly the timeframe that wasn't given. So, uh, that might have been why advisors weren't able to do it, because it was after-school hours or something like that. But I didn't hear that any advisors were dropping their commitment based off of anything, so.
Well, again, I just think the clubs are so important and, and having those opportunities is just so enriching and, and helps with.
I agree, and I think it's a really good outlet for the students as well to get involved with act outside of school, community service hours, plus inside of school and connecting with the student body as well, so.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Hey, thank you, Sashi and Brendan. Good, excellent. Okay, that brings us into our discussion action for the evening, oh, no, yeah, we have consent agenda, we have consent agenda. This evening, this, um, so, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. For the minutes, uh, Jenny won at the time.
Yeah.
Eight forty-eight.
Thank you.
Very nice, very. If you want to know the decent line.
No, no. It's none of our business. It's none of our business, Barry.
Um, so, we have a consent agenda, is everybody okay with the other ones?
Yes.
So who would like?
I would like to make the most proposed consent agenda as posted.
Okay. Let's see, so Kate, you want to second that?
Second.
Thank you. Um, okay, so all those favorite motions signify by saying aye.
Right.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone who wants to abstain? And for the folks at home, on the item that was on the senate agenda was a generous donation of, uh, $4,000 from the PTA, uh, the middle school to Eastline High School uh, for, in support of senior activities.
That's right, for those students that didn't get their activities. Yeah, middle school, it's going to support them, yeah, when they're graduating.
When they graduate, yeah.
That's a really nice gesture, I'm not sure who came up with that, Jason, but that was a really nice case.
That's huge, that's huge.
Yeah. Okay, that brings us into our discussion action for the evening. First one up for discussion and action is flexibilities with the Connecticut Guidelines for educator evaluation for 2021.2 school year.
Yeah, so last year we had flexibilities, um, and, and we just talked just for a minute about this year, you saw the letter that we had received as well, and, uh.
Yeah, so part of the process is the PDAP committee comes together and, um, which is comprised of both teachers and administrators and district representative involved the buildings. Um, we took a look at what the flexibilities were offered for this year. Um, they were very similar to what was at, what was offered last year. Um, informal observations, um, some flexibilities and how we approach our goal setting. Um, working more collaboratively at the goal-setting process, really actually great. It's really great for teachers and for administrators. Um, and so the one change from the flexibility from last year to this year is that we do have to provide a summative rating for teachers at the end of the school year. So, um, you know, we talked about that and the, the team, um, was unanimously in favor of moving forward with the flexibilities this year. And we will, uh, be tracking their goal-setting and their observations, um, and their mid-year and summative reflections through, uh, frontline, which is where we, where, where we track that and that will provide us with the opportunity to give the summative rating at the end of the year.
We're definitely going to see some changes in the years ahead too, that's for sure, on stuff, evaluation. Um, that, that will be coming down from the state, it was on a legislative call this morning, we were talking about that, so. Stay tuned, we'll definitely see further changes.
Any questions, um, for Annalise and Jeff on this? And this required for act?
It does, yes.
You would want to make a motion on?
I would like to make a motion to approve the flexibilities within the Connecticut Guideline for Educator Evaluation for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second. Second. Bill, right? Good, okay. Uh, any further discussion on the side?
If we can be able to see it or review it or have any opportunity to understand it more thoroughly?
Oh, yeah, I mean, at some point, okay, we can, yeah, we can share what the, what the form would look like. Um, we've modified those, basically the same as what we used last year, but with some tweaks back into my learning plan system and so, yeah. Send it up, put it in the weekly update.
I think that would be great, because I kind of feel like I don't know what I'm voting on, so. I feel like perhaps I would abstain based on that.
Pretty much, you know, okay, true, no, that's fine.
Yeah, kind of a rite of passage, basically, of, you know, for the, for the state with, uh, with this piece, but sure, we can absolutely show it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion, so all those favorite motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
One extension, Peter? Oh, two, you're very, okay. Okay, so that passes. And that brings us to discussion, kind of follow-up discussion on what we heard at our last board meeting on district, uh, school improvement plans.
Jeff, yeah, you mentioned it the last meeting, we put this back on just for, you know, any further, uh, further discussion, appreciate, you know, some of the input. Um, just some of those, some of those highlighted points that we really focused on, you know, creating a document that is easy to read, easy to use. Um, you know, and it came from, you know, the work of our, our staff across the schools, school-based committees, they did a great job. And, uh, we're proud of, you know, what they had helped us to kind of put together and what they'll be focusing on working on, uh, this year. Um, but it's, it's a one-year-only plan and then at some point we'll have to probably maybe mid-year, we should start to think and get that back on the agenda to talk about, uh, you know, what it is we want to consider, whether it be a, another one year for, you know, 2023 or a two-to-three year. Um, I see where we're at, at that point, but. I'll kind of leave it at that, and if any further, you know, comments or thoughts, um, appreciate the, again, the input. And Barry hit something, I think, last time about, you know, the hundred percent beats and we've taken that into consideration, but, yeah.
Yeah, just a recommendation if possible. And I think it would be helpful if there were a few checkpoints throughout the year where we could get some like progress monitoring or an update. Um, just so we know whether or not we're on track or areas that we need to make more traction with versus, um, you know, waiting a whole year to figure out where we are.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Barry?
This, you know, this is in final form, but, uh, whatever possibility that there's any revisions to it. There are three suggestions that we continue to consider. On page 11 and 12 of the document, um, the issue of accountability, two really good sets of examples of accountability. You know, and if the type of language that is on the middle school and elementary school on page 11, 12, could be mirrored throughout the entire document, you know, that would set these points some level of accountability. You know, because this is like the, the contract that, um, you know, we have taxpayers where they only do is $59,000. We have to deliver something for, you know, we're going to deliver something, we should have some accountability. So, the kind of statements on 11 and 12 would be really great to take a good mirror to the whole document. Uh, second suggestion would be one, um, could use a term like transparency of the, what is like the, uh, the theory of, um, learning or cognition that's behind this? Somehow, between all the lines, there is an idea of what is the best approach to help kids learn. You know, and, uh, and some of section on, this is our theory of action for advancing, uh, kids' learning. You know, and for example, I mean, there's kind of like on the table right now, there are, uh, in literature, there's discussions between formalism, you know, which is the idea that what's in the kid's head is going to be in what the teacher's head, what's in the textbook, what's in the test, you know? Another one is social cognition, that meaning is a drive through a social discourse. The third one is that, uh, embedded, that the learning process embedded within the, uh, structure of the school itself, the interactions. Fourth is embodied, which is really set within the experiences of a student. And somehow if, um, there is some theory of action within the document, if you could pull it out and make it more explicit to say these are the guiding principles of cognition or how we think learning happens, on which this whole document is based.
Okay.
And that the third document goes, the third suggestion, reading through the section on, uh, varsity equity inclusion.
Right.
The, um, language of our, like, strategy, um, is not fully reflected there. You know, so I would suggest, read back through that and then read through the strategy, uh, which the major goal of the strategy is to build students' capacity to, um, counter racism, foster equity, diversity, and inclusion in all their actions. So very, very, our, our strategy is very student-centered.
Right.
You know, it's like, this is what's going to happen to students, and the whole plan is to push this down so students are able to act, you know, on behalf of fostering inclusion, equity, and versus, versus. That kind of major goal or thrust of our strategy, uh, is not really, um, is there really reflected within that whole section on the, uh?
Yeah.
It's, so we just go back to an end adjustment.
Thanks, Frank. Yeah. Okay, anybody else? Anything else? I thought, I get it, it just, um, overall, I think that the, uh, the improvement plans have really taken another step forward in a very positive, uh, direction in terms of the clarity and, uh, and the accountability. Um, it'll always, it's always better, you can always improve upon things, but I think it really has, really took a major, major step, I think. The administrative team and everybody involved and pulling this together. Congratulations. That's great.
Definitely work, uh, work in progress, and yeah, again, thanks to the, the team members and, and we can give a session to.
Okay. Anybody else? Um, next item, which is the spring 2021 district assessment overview. Jeff, you talked.
Yeah, Annalise, the middle school team, uh, did a real nice job at our AAA, uh, meeting and kind of walked through, uh, some slides. Um, we're going to bring them up here and kind of run through them in a little quicker fashion, we modified the deck a little bit.
Apologize ahead of time to our friends who are at AAA.
Yeah, many of, uh, you know, Barry and Lee and Jamie and Bill, um, and Kate came in and caught some of that as well, so they heard some of this, so we'll move through it a little bit of a quicker clip and any questions?
Right, we want to drill them down as deep this time around, but, um, and I just want to thank Jason, who's, uh, from the middle school, who's here, um, to talk a little bit about how the data from a district level, um, then gets transferred into the use at the building level, so, um. I am going to provide you with a big picture overview and, um, as I said, Mr. Bickgood will dive a little bit deeper for us. But before I begin.
Annalise, I have a question, do you want us to roll till the end to ask questions or what would you prefer?
Um. It doesn't really matter, I think that if you have a question, raise your hand, because sometimes it's easier just to address it in the moment, um.
Thank you.
And if we get to buy down with questions, we can maybe.
Put the brakes on.
Okay, yeah, we'll see how it goes. Hopefully I could get out ahead of some of the questions, but, um, I want to start with a cautionary tale, because as you know, um, the past academic, the 2021 school year, um, was one of interrupted learning, um, with various learning modules. Uh, you know, to, on a typical traditional school year, many of our students come to us, we are able to provide consistent, um, opportunities and, um, experiences for them in the school building, and that was just not the case, um, given our situation last year. So, um, we'll look at this data, um, with a cautionary eye, knowing that, uh, it was, uh, quite the year of, um, interruption. I am going to talk to you, um, about our summative assessment that, um, the LPS engages in each spring. The first is the SAT at the high school, um, and that test, um, uh, covers the math and ELA for grade 11. Um, uh, we also use the Next Generation Science Assessment, that's a statewide assessment, and that's administered in grades five, eight, and 11. And finally, the Smarter Balance Assessment, it's, this is also referred to as Sback, will be, is administered in ELA for ELA and math in grades through three through eight. Um, so I'll start with the high school and move down, um, SAT, this slide, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself here. If you're following along in the presentation, I'm on slide five. Um, so this is, uh, an overview of how our students did in comparison to the state on the school day SAT last, last spring, and you can see that, um, 52% of our students met both benchmarks for the English and math components as compared to 35% at the state level. And if you look to the right, um, it breaks it out by, um, content area, so, uh, for ELA, 79% of our students met that benchmark. Intermath, 57% of our, of our students met that benchmark.
So, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh. Do we have data, two things, one is, do we, do we have any goals or what we were hoping to achieve? Um, obviously, the net, no benchmarks. We'd like zero, but I don't know if we have, well, what about meeting both or individually, do we have where we want to be? And do we have for DIRTT and I guess we need something to measure and see how we did it again?
So part of a cautionary tale, especially from the message from the G at the state is to not compare to DIRTTs. So we did not do that for this analysis tonight. Um, I do, I had the state, the, the college board does provide the state, so I included that. But in terms of how the data is used at the building level, it is used on a variety of different measures. I know Deb and her team and Deb, feel free to chime in at any point, are looking at the SAT data, um, and setting, um, you know, goals affiliated with that. But more importantly, that, this data is individualized by student. And so for those students who are in the red and yellow, um, we're cohorting them and providing intervention, interventions through that MTS, S model at the high school, which that is going to be a topic of our AAA meeting in November, to talk about how do we use that data to talk, to talk more specific, to individualize, um, interventions for students who are struggling.
Well, I was curious, I say, what, is there a bullet or two on why the state said you can compare the DIRTTs? Because I would think that's, uh, somehow naturally.
And we thought the same thing, Eric, yeah, but the, the problem with it from, from what they're stating is there's so much variation in what districts did with hybrid, who was in hybrid how long, who was in full.
So for this particular.
This particular, yeah, just, exactly, exactly.
No, 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 no.
No, no, just this, yeah.
Yeah. Makes sense. Which DIRTT are we these days?
Uh, DIRTT.
D as in dandy?
As in, we could call it dandy.
So on slide six, um, just wanted to kind of give you a snapshot of, um, our 11th graders in the fall compared to their assessment in the spring. So they, our 11th graders last year took the PSAT in the fall, you can see their average score there is 550, overall score. And then, and this is for ELA, by the way, this slide in particular. And then they, um, that same quota, or roughly that same cohort of students engaged in the SAT in the spring, and you can say there was a, a gain of 10 points there. So the projected growth was between 550 and 590. Um, you know, so there was a little bit of growth. And then, um, it, it also provides us with, um, you know, what we could expect in future assessments as well. Um, and then the next slide on slide seven, uh, looks at that same type of analysis but for math. So again, we did see, um, growth over the course of the fall assessment as compared to the spring assessment for math. Yes.
Just the, it didn't actually happen in the fall. January to March.
Oh, I'm sorry, right, okay. Right, right.
Oh, yeah. So January, 2021 to March, 2021? Or the, yeah.
January.
January?
Yes, we were here in October to take the PSAT.
Okay.
It's only like a two month, three month.
Yeah.
A short gap, a short window of time.
So it's probably not statistically relevant, it's, any of this growth is probably just, maybe there's a little bit of, really. We did much in two months to hope for.
Yeah. It's interesting, I'm, I apologize, because I was not aware, I'm going to blame it on my. It's interesting, I'm, I apologize because I was not aware, I'm gonna blame it on my newness, but I was, I made the assumption that, that October assessment was taken in October.
That's my.
So, and, um, and because it's, well, the college board, actually, this document came straight from college board. And they indicate that the assessment was taken in the fall of twenty twenty. So. Thank you, Deb, for the clarification, yeah. Um, okay, so.
Warm up.
It was a warm up, right, right.
Which helped them probably.
Yeah. Like, oh, I, I've seen this before.
Yeah.
Comfortable. Took this last week.
So just shifting gears.
I'm not gonna say much of this thing, because I covered the questions during EA meeting.
They were good questions.
Very good, and he's been, within the standard error of measure, there's probably no difference.
Yeah.
You know, even though it's a numerical difference, yeah, there's no difference.
Right. Yeah.
So, um, just shifting gears to the ELPSSDA data overview. So this is looking at both math and ELA for all of our students who are in person or mostly hybrid learners. So this is not our remote learners. Um, these are the learners that we had the most contact time with over the course of the year. And, um, you know, the trends that I wanna point out to you on this slide ultimately is that, um. The, you know, the LA scores were higher than the math, which is a trend that was similar to what was observed at the state level.
Again, as we went through, for, because these, it's. These are on a categorical scale, one, two, three, four. And when you put things on a categorical scale, when you get on the border, if you don't take into account the standard error of measure, somebody is just below. Three. You know, because then it gets, it's a lot as a two, but within the standard error of measure, they may actually be a three. You know, and so, um. They, it's, I don't know why the state did this, but they put this on a categorical scale, and there's a limit to how well you can interpret this. These bars are so close, and within the standard error, and then it's, you know, if you kind of look at this stuff, oh, there's a difference, you know, between the blue and the orange. It's really hard, uh, unless they put these on continuous scales and, uh, you know, kind of work in standard error of the measure and stuff like that. And it analysis of it, you need that to get a difference. So. This appears to be a difference, but I would be reluctant because of the nature of the scaling used here to say that there really is a difference. And all these, the next group of slides where they use this categorical scale.
Do you even think, sorry, do you even think like grade eight, so I, I see the, you know, forty and four, six and seven are pretty close. Grade eight does have a.
What I'm talking about, it's like beats or exceeds, what they need or exceed is whether they're in kind of like level one, two, three, or four. The need is, do they need level three? So these are the percentages that need level three on this categorical one to four scale.
Got it.
Okay, and so, but because of the nature of a categorical scale. And without accommodating the standard error of measure around the, um, the breakpoints for three to four, two to three. It's really hard to say that there's. Even though that, that there's difference in the sizes of the bars. Whether the bars are actually different is, all these bars, because they're, need or exceeding this category three. It's kind of hard to say.
So if someone's, is, is two point nine five and someone else is a three point oh five. Three point oh five is meeting or exceeding and a two point nine five is not.
Exactly.
But. The standard here is. They're.
Standard measure is ten.
Yeah.
You know, they could be reversed.
Yeah, yeah.
So the standard error measure is ten, that was my question.
Well, it depends upon, so these go back into the, um, Sback, the Sback is like a two thousand point scale. And generally, the standard error of measure, there's around fifteen.
Okay.
You know, so there could be like. You know, they can score it like three thousand, which might be, I'm not sure, let's say that they cut off the three is three thousand. Well, that score could either be three thousand fifteen or two thousand eighty five. And depending on what conditions were that day, they could be done in two, where they're actually got the three.
Yes, okay.
So they, they take the two thousand plus scale, they crunch it into levels, and then they use this as the levels.
I guess.
It's a categorical skill, so it's, it's really hard to. Say just because of bars or different types, but there really is a difference.
Okay. Um, and so just look, digging a little bit deeper, um, looking at our high needs population for versus not high needs. So the first few graphs that I had shown you were all students combined together, and this graph, um, just demonstrates, um. You know, obviously, the gap between when we separate them out, right? So, um, something we need to continue to keep our eye on, um, and. Something we have been talking about as a team in general.
Can we find this down at all demographic, please? Is there anything where you can see that there's?
You can manipulate the data in a lot of different ways. So, you know, I'm trying to provide you with a big picture overview. So that the, the high needs population is economically disadvantaged, English learners and students with disabilities all combined together. Those are the students who, uh, we, we do, but I could, we could pull that out, like, we could look at it by gender, by race. There's a, a lot of different ways we can, um, we can look at the data. And we can look at the data in relation to student growth, which I know is something that you're really interested in very. Unfortunately, in preparation for this, in EdSite Secure, the state has not provided that analysis for us yet, but I'm excited to look at that too. Yeah, so.
I've been pushing forward to.
Yeah. Because if it was in there, the state did have that information in their analysis. And there is a part of, a piece of EdSite Secure that says SDA growth, but when you pull it up, it's still only last year's data. So it's, they're still working on it. So, um, I could provide you a little two point oh update when we have that.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, so slide nine, nope. Slide ten is an interesting slide. Um, I don't know how statistically valid it is, but, um, one of the, one of the, um. One of the things the state looked at was, you know, how did remote learners do in, in relation to those students who spent more time in school? And, um, before I talk a little, these are all students who, no matter their classification, whether they are in person, mostly hybrid or remote learners. All the assessment scores that I presented to you tonight are those assessment scores that were, of the students who took the assessment in school. I did not include the remote learning assessment in our data, because, um, the state did not do that either. Because if they're, they're not sure that those results are valid. So. But with that being said, you can see here that, um, in the lower grades are students who, um. Who were engaged in, um, either mostly hybrid or in person scored better than, um, those who were fully remote. And it does trend differently in grades five through eight. Um, just interesting to see, um, but I honestly, you know, when you look at the N in the table next to it, we're talking about a small amount of. Students, it's really hard to statistically say, um, that there was any sort of valid reason behind that, right? So.
And point where it came up in AAA was, these are students that were onsite, remote students that came in and took the assessment, not the students that were remote, taking the test remote.
Right.
As well.
Right. Yes.
Exactly, the number is so small.
Right, it's a small group of students. And then if, if you look at the trend analysis, again, no surprise and very much in alignment to the state that both for ELA and math are, you know. We had pretty, um, pretty nice projections happening before, um, twenty eighteen, nineteen, or before the twenty twenty one school year got here. But you can just see that, um, it really did interrupt, um, the learning for students now over the course of the past six years.
And three really knows that. See the dip.
And this is. Grade based cohort cohort of people, but it's not taking the third grader, so then in fourth grade and then in fifth grade and showing. That same group of third graders becoming fourth graders, becoming fifth graders. This is just how.
Right, this is, exactly.
Yep.
Although if you go to the next slide, I did, I did look at that. So, um, if you look at, this is the rough cohort analysis for ELA. Um, so the first pair of, um, lines there are students who are in third grade in twenty nineteen and fifth grade in twenty twenty one. So this is a rough cohort analysis, and you can see that, um. For most of the grades that there was a dip, although, you know, as Barry had mentioned, this could really truly be an insignificant dip, given. You know, the standard measure of error, so. And then same analysis for math on slide thirteen, rough cohort analysis. And the gaps are a little bit bigger in math, which would align to the trends we saw at the state as well. And you know, our MS, MTSS teams are looking at this data, Jason will talk a little bit about that. Also looking to triangulate it with some of the other internal assessments that we use to identify what kids need in order to accelerate their learning. And the last table here is just a, um, an overview picture of our NGSS assessments. Again, same types of trends, um, except for grade eleven. Did better.
Interesting.
Uh, there was one other.
So six to eight in math.
That's right, there was a six to eight improvement in math.
Yeah.
So those were the.
So, yeah, did that, did those also match the state or did, or did the state? I'm curious.
No, no, this, the cohort analysis for the state was, um, that it, it declined. So that was kind of unique too.
But what magic is happening there?
Find that's, that's where we need to dig a little bit, right? So I'm gonna hang, hand it over to, uh, Mr. Biggood to provide you. Kind of like a brief overview on.
Sure.
What does data look like? So this is big picture overview, right? But what does it look like at the building level when we're talking about what's, what's good for kids?
Yeah, so, um. I know many of you here.
Just before you start, I, so, so, so I'm, I'm kind of looking for like. In one sentence, after looking at all that information.
Yeah.
What have, is there anything that, that we learned?
Well, I think what we've learned is that, um, you know, we're, we are utilizing the information that's in front of us. To put into play some of the wonderful systems that Eastline Public Schools has. I feel as though Eastline got out ahead of what they knew was, what you knew was coming, right? So really what we're doing is we're taking this information and utilizing our student centered coaching models. Are really, um, strong MTSS teams at the, um, at the school based level to talk about. Okay, so there's these gaps here, but how, what do we do to help accelerate students' learning along the way? I think what we learned is, we had lost learning time for kids over the course of the past year. To no one's fault, it was just what happened as a result of COVID. So, you know, in a hybrid learning environment, you're having less contact time with students. We're doing our best to provide asynchronous, asynchronous learning experiences for them. But overall, it does not replicate what a traditional school experience looks like for kids. And I think what we're seeing is, what we saw tonight was the impact of that. Knowing that now, though, what's really exciting, what I'm trying to highlight, all the great work of the buildings is. We are, we are aware of it, we're using this information to, um, plan and put in place, um, you know, the necessary supports for kids to be successful. Um, and I'm really hopeful with the model in place with regards to student centered coaching and the MTSS teams that. We're on a really great trajectory to see very different numbers in the spring.
So if we didn't do anything except allow the kids to come back to full time school in person school. We would expect to see a bump up.
That's true.
I'm not sure if I understand your question.
Say that again, if we didn't do.
If, if, yeah, if we do, yeah, nothing, if we didn't.
Oh, I see.
Hire more math coaches or.
Yeah.
Whatever, there's, there's gonna be a, is there gonna?
There should be. Rebound. There should be a rebound effect, just by putting the levels of intervention, we're expecting a greater rebound effect.
Yeah, I mean, yes, we would expect growth, right, because the learning model has changed. However, you have to consider that some of the gaps and, or things that kids missed along the way. Needs specific addressing in order to be successful in a grade level unit. And that is the magic of the work of the coaches and the interventionists. They're diagnosing what kids need to be, need to do to be successful in grade level appropriate work. Not pulling out kids and doing remediation, but keeping them in the class, providing the support they need to have in that moment to be successful. Um, to project, to project their learning forward. And that, that is not easy to do. Um, that requires data analysis. It requires, you know, it requires help, um, from coaches to support teachers on. How do I differentiate my classroom, what's the learning modules look like in my classroom, so that everybody is getting what they need to be successful?
Okay. Okay, so I'm just gonna tell you a little bit of story, sort of how we use data at the middle school. What the progression was, what it's used for, and what decisions we make, and going back to the interventions, what kind of interventions we introduce based on that data. So if you look here at our core points, if you go back about five years at the middle school, we took a, a long hard look at all the data that we had available, which, and it was expensive. But it wasn't cohesive. So then we thought about, well, what do we need, how are we gonna use it? And if you remember Amy's work, and we carried that work through here about triangulation, so. As valuable as the Sback data is, it's just one piece of information that happens in one brief two week window in the springtime each year. So how do we supplement that data with other data to make sure that the decisions we make are really valid and reliable and good decisions? And then how does that all lead into an intervention process for us? So we can switch to the next slide. I just logged off, so I'm gonna just try to talk to these. Um. Is there a Kevin who up here?
Yeah.
So if you think about back progression from two thousand sixteen or so, we established that need. And what data did we have? Well, we had good classroom data, we had some aspect data, and we actually used the tool called the STAR, had that type of map in ELA. By two thousand eighteen, we decided we need to go over the plan, and that plan was, think about what some of the research tells us. We did a lot of site visits, we went to a lot of different districts, we went to our friends over in the line, we went to HK Middle School. Um, we went to some DIRKs that were above, we talked about third G today, we went to some DIRKs that were A and B. And we went to some DIRKs that were a little below, to see what they, how they use data. And then we came together in two thousand nineteen, and we provided teachers with some training. We tried to integrate as much as we could with the skill that we had in it, into infinite campus. We more clearly defined the roles of our coaches, and then we developed that MTSS protocol, which I'll talk about a little bit. Next slide. So a lot of stuff on this slide, don't worry about it all. I wanted to start, rather than get right into the academics, I think it's so important, we made. All the schools and the whole district, well, big initiatives and big movement in the STL growth of students. We have to, we know we have to have our kids in a really great spot, STL, or we can't get some work done in the classroom. It's good to have kids really stable and comfortable, doing what they're doing. School's a busy place, middle school exceptionally busy, lots of interventions happen through an STL perspective. So this just shows, uh, this is only one page, but we've got names are decked here, we're one, two, thirty students. On any given day, we might have to bring a crisis team together to do a DCF referral, to do a suicide risk assessment if someone had suicidal ideations. We might have to make a two on one call, we might wanna know if there's outside counseling. Forty years ago, five years ago, we didn't track all this data, and we knew it was important data, because we knew it was gonna lead into interventions. So this kind of leads us again, it's a story about data and how we use that data. So we go into the next slide. Here, now we've got some longitudinal data, so we go back from two thousand seventeen, this goes through last April, two thousand twenty one. And it tells us all the events, this, um, particular first year, we had fifty one total events, and you can see what they all are here. And again, we don't need to get sort of into the reach with the data, but what's important is the story that it tells us, so we need to allocate resources to chart. Address these issues, do we have that data to substantiate that request? If you go on to the next slide, we've taken some of the salient points from that, particularly crisis interventions, and you can look at the trends here. And those trends tell us the story for the resources again that we might need. Um, what's interesting for us here, this slide jumped right up, and we did it, we were hybrid most of the year, right? So our threat assessments in school, whatever those might be, they were the lowest they've ever been, well, we didn't have kids in school. So we just didn't have those interactions with students. DCF referrals, interestingly enough, were not that much different, even in a hybrid and remote setting, than they were from the previous year, and that's, and that's telling. Next slide, please, a little bit more information here, you can look at that nineteen twenty school year, just our number of two on one calls. So I suppose every time I present this data to faculty, the folks, I always stress that just because the bar goes up, it doesn't mean it's a bad thing. It means that our. The bar goes up, it doesn't mean it's a bad thing, it means that our teachers and our mental health experts are doing a good job identifying. Whatever needs to be addressed. So we shouldn't be alarmed when we see it go up, we should say, you know what, we're. We're doing a better job in identifying when kids are struggling. And when we can identify when kids struggle, that allows us the, the resources in place to support those kids. If you look at here, our, our female population in the last couple of years, you've seen it on the news. Just about the impacts of social media, you know, we see that filter through school a little bit. So again, using that data to build a story, provide resources for our kids. This was a really busy slide.
Just before you go to the math, so on the male, female differential, then I think it's about seventy percent. In those two years are incidents are female, seventy thirty, so is there something we're. Doing, maybe that's a different conversation, but it'd be good to know like, sort of, how are we, what are we doing and hopefully influence change?
Yeah, so, um. We, I think the important part of this data, in a bigger picture, we hired a second social worker at the middle school, which is really, really important. Yeah, we've got a couple, um, we put, we've had together now for a few years, our, a student life team. And that team meets every two weeks to re-review all this data. And that team consists of our social workers, our school psychologists, administrators are on the team, um, our nurses are on the team. So to identify one particular thing that is, I, I don't think I can answer that based on the data that we collect. But I think the bit, the more we collect, the bigger story that it follows over time for us. No, I really didn't answer the questionnaire, but. It definitely is a trend and it's been a consistent trend, it's outpaced the males every year since we've tracked the data. Next slide please. So again, busy slide here. This is for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, the reason we included this slide was just, it just shows at the end of the school year. The data that we actually gather to track academic performance. And if you look at this, it's essentially, you know, this section here is all about S back. And then it moves on to the STAR data, which we use for math at that point, we now use I rate. And then that time we do pre and post testing for all of our modules in mathematics. So you can look at these graphs two ways, if you look at them through a vertical perspective, you can look at it through a horizontal perspective. From a vertical perspective, you look at the best example here is unit one, everybody's in, uh, red color, because everyone can do so well on that. So that's okay, because that's a pre-assessment, they haven't had any exposure to the topic. But if you look next to it, it's hopefully green, a little bit of yellow and then some red. So it starts to tell the story about our student, where they are. If you look horizontally this way, that's more of a student driven issue than it is an instructional driven issue. So if I look horizontally, number fourteen, there's quite a bit of pink there. So now I'm starting to think about building those intervention groups. What's important about this too, and I can show you, I think it's on the next slide. Is we sort this, this is what Dr. Shepherd was talking about earlier today, is we sort, we look at level one, level two, level three and level four. But we know this level three student could be on the custom just as easily, could have been a level two, we don't wanna overlook that. So we're doing more work with the scales for us to get in that and kind of see. You can be a level three here and you can be a level three here, and that tells a different story for each student. Teachers have access to this, the whole department, say for mathematics, has access. So they can actually go back to years past and look at students and then they can sort by whichever category they want. And that starts to build the foundation again for students that they might wanna include in their intervention groups. We also now include, um, services that they might be getting. Whether they are a special ed student or not, that might change the services in terms of intervention or not. So this was just a blow up of the previous slide. Next slide. Here you look at, this is this year, the, the purpose of this slide is to show you that. The last slide was a little busy, there was a lot of data on there, teachers were into, there's a lot going on. This slide is meant to be a little bit more elegant, a little clearer, a little bit more succinct. And what we've done here, the big difference for us is we switched over instead of using STAR, we now use I ready. We include first score for I ready and we also are implementing interim assessment blocks or called I A Bs. We've had a chance to participate in some work, um, with a G at the state level who. Really recommended that districts use some of those I A Bs and experiment with those and. Showed that the districts that have used those I A Bs have had great results in terms of. Um, you know, shrinking the gap between their high needs kids and their non-high needs kids. So we piloted that last year, we've got some expectations that you saw written into our school improvement plan about the I A Bs that are right in there. We're excited about those and they provide great data.
Jason, real quick before you go ahead, I have a question about student one and then student three.
Here on this sheet.
Yeah, exactly. Just that they're, you know, both identified, one is special ed one of five oh four, five oh four could be health related, but special ed. If they are above, above, above. And I ready for fall twenty twenty one. Uh, are they continuing to be a special, a student, a special needs?
It depends, I mean, you know, we even go to their annual review, we go to those meetings and we do some testing. Hopefully there was some triennial data that might be more current, so we would look at that data and then the P P T team would decide whether they would continue or not. So I think it, um, you know, it all depends, we try to really, that's why they're individualized educational plans, so we individualize that for each student. Think what's important here, because you're, it's a well-taken point. Here, when we move into the next slide, which is our M T S S process. This student wouldn't qualify for M T S S because they're already getting a lot of support through the special education process. Yet student three, five oh four, we have to know what that was for, but they would probably qualify for our tier two, tier three interventions. And again, think about, that's why we're using all this data to make those exact decisions.
Thank you.
Sure, the next slide. Um, Grant, can you click the link to document?
That's me, I'm driving.
That is essentially, it's, we'll only do a few slides, we brought a team of folks together. A few years back. And we put a team of, I think we had about twelve or fourteen people on the team. And said, we've gotta come up with a protocol, we're trying to do these interventions. It has to be a defined protocol, we went to, again, site visits everywhere, we came up with our manual, which is really great. But the key to this and the key to doing good interventions, you gotta have a coach, you gotta have an interventionist. Because you can have it, but if you don't have the people to support it, the plan falls on its face, it just doesn't work. So we were so appreciative of the math coach and we've had a literacy coach for a few years now. And that's been great, but this talks our teachers through the process. Of how to use the data to get to the stage of intervention and then what that looks like. So I won't get too deep into that, we did for AAA subcommittee, we went a little bit deeper into that information. Next slide.
I'm just wondering, Jason, at what point is there an evaluation, I guess, at tier one or tier two probably when. You would do the review of the medical records and understand if there's a hearing loss or vision loss. Um, what other health conditions might be impacting or interfering with the student's success that will. And that was not mentioned at the AAA committee meetings, so.
Yeah, sure, so any kind of health related things, I think the most important piece of that is that when. We do that student led, um, student life team that I mentioned, or we have the school psychologists, the social workers, our nurses are part of that team. And so they are really apprised on, you know, whether they've gotta do some screening or what, or anything that might be limiting a child's access to the curriculum. Or, and so they're instrumental and, uh, you know, a part of that team that, um, is really valuable to us to help make those decisions.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on, when do the, uh, like on unit one, understand place value pre? Is that a, is that a, a focus test or, or something?
Yeah, so.
Just focused on that one topic or is it?
Focus on that topic and again, that was a few years back, we, we don't do our pre posts anymore, we're switching to those I A Bs. Okay, and I think we have better data because we switched over to vertical I ready.
Yeah.
Gives us better data, but they really answered your question. We would always wanna test kids, um, before they had any exposure to that particular unit, just so we could get a benchmark. It didn't go on the report card, it wasn't graded in the sense that we would send it home to a parent. But give a teacher a good sense of if I got thirteen percent right, someone else got eighty percent right. We need to accommodate for that eighty percent student as much as we do for the thirteen percent.
Just kind of thinking about a child sitting there and taking, taking something and I looked at, everybody gets like seventeen or eleven. It's kind of like, it's kind of a downer experience. If you have questions that are buried in other things where, where they're actually.
Yeah.
Being tested and say, oh, I know, yeah, I got that, I got that, what the heck does this mean?
It definitely came up at a lot of our P L C meetings and it was one of the reasons why we moved to I ready.
Some of the software we've invested in, like I ready provides us with the information that a pre-test would have done.
Yeah.
Without it being, feeling so, um, harsh.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah.
It is progressive, it'll move them along, so when they take one, they do well on, the next question will be a little bit harder.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, so since we have all three levels present today, I am one of those people who take standardized testing with a grain of sand. Um, it's just a snapshot in time of our students. Um, I'm one of those parents who tells my children not to worry, don't sweat it, if you do good, you do good, if you do bad, you do bad. Just do what you can do and we'll deal with it later.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because it is just a snapshot. Um, and I don't believe that it's our standard, none of our children learn the same, teach the same, are the same. Um, is there some kind of? Data point you're using for those students that test poorly? But do very well in school?
Yeah, I, I think to answer that, at least for, for Eastline Middle School. What's important is the variety in the, in, of data that we collect, because we'll get a student here that. If, just to first blush on this, it looks like they're really struggling. But their presentations in classroom, in their participation in clubs, in their ability to, to. Um, present in front of the class, all those things paint a really different story of that student. So again, all these are used to paint a bigger picture before we make any big decisions like putting a student into an intervention.
Okay, right.
I, I do wanna say.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, like, because I could do really good on a pre-assessment, a post-assessment, but when you look at my S back scores, I'm a one.
Right.
Yeah, um.
Yeah.
I, I just wanna make sure we're not just instantly putting children in the interventions because they did poorly on a standardized test.
No, if I can, we're one more brief, and it's already said, being honest, is our internechists for language arts, I've just shared a very hard-fold story about. How a student had really struggled, but, um, once they got those interventions, wanted to come back to school. And we've, I think the number that we used today was thirty kids last year, we kept out of the special education process.
Yeah.
That doesn't seem like a big number in terms of a building that's seven hundred and fifty or eight hundred kids, but that's thirty I A Bs, that's thirty.
That's a whole classroom.
That's a lot and, and so if we can keep supporting these programs and use that to keep it out of the process, it's a win for us.
I have one more question. Uh, I'm just wondering at what point or what's the coaching model so that teachers start to develop some of the skills that the interventionists are. So adapted, understanding.
It's a great question and, um, we're being guided by, and Elise is doing a great job with it, but we've got, um. Our coach, coach is seventy percent of the time, so seventy percent of her week is devoted to getting into classrooms. Giving those teachers those skills, not using the coach as an interventionist, because you can't build capacity with that.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna really shine the light on the coaching cycle, uh, at the November fourth AAA meeting. We're gonna have some of the coaches come in and share what that looks like, but they've just engaged in a significant amount of professional development. Um, around student centered coaching, so looking at not just one data point, but a variety of different. Of, uh, information that helps them identify, um, what kids need in order to succeed, to be succeeding. And the coach and the teacher work together, there might be so, some co-planning, co-teaching around that. But yeah, we're gonna have the team come and share a little bit about what that looks like. I'm really, really excited about the model, I think it's, um, you know, there's a lot of different coaching models. The student centered coaching model is just what we need, especially post-COVID, it's a high quality coaching model.
And then, and then in that model, are the students are translating. Developing some meta cognition themselves, understanding what they're learning. It, um, strengths or weaknesses or needs.
I mean, we all know that's a really important part of the process, we can, we can talk to the coaches about to what extent our students involved in that process, it's a great question. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Testing, the bulk of.
It's a busy time.
It's a busy time.
Really, really crucial time in a child's education too. Between lower ed and higher ed and it's very, very crucial time.
Are we good? Can we move on? Next item up for discussion, board of ed and superintendent goals.
Yeah, so these are very draft, um, but, uh, Tim and I had kinda. Set down and, and worked to develop some, uh, some draft goals based off of, you know, discussions we've had, uh, plans we've, we've talked about, we're imagining. Um, the four goals specific to, uh, our work, um, as, uh, as schools and as a district this year. So, uh, again, draft, um, input is always appreciated, um, especially on the board of ed goals, those are your goals. Uh, specific to, you know, your work. Um, so, uh, and, and Kate, um, brought up, uh, Kate wanted to share, she brought up with me today, you know, that evaluation process of the board too. That factors into, into this as well.
Well, I guess I was getting ready for tonight's meeting and just was going through some of our different policies and. It said that we're annually, um, supposed to schedule dates to conduct self-evaluation and. There's just a lot of points on this, like community leadership, influencing educational policy, community involvement. Communicating with the public, decision-making process, allocating resources. Developing our own board policies, evaluating our superintendent, promoting. Good employee relations and then expectations for all of us as board members. And then conducting the work, how we do our work and how does, how do we develop the support to get stronger board members and. Ask better questions and do a better job helping with the whole process, so.
Yeah.
And as, we're supposed to, I guess, set up dates to be able to do that. There's so much here, I'm almost wondering if we should chunk it out somehow.
And I think some of that is embedded in, you know, uh, and, and maybe there could be, you know, some additional thoughts or sentences, you know, within this too, but. Within the board of ed, uh, board of ed goals, um, I'm really trying to keep my goals specific, those four core areas of work that we're doing this year. But, uh, you know, your support of that is, uh, it's important as well. Yeah.
Very good, very good. Um, yeah, I mean, this is, these are just draft and I, you know, as far as the, you know, I'm just very open and, and so. So as far as the board of ed goals go, I think it's important that the current board. Progress the goals as best as, as can and have and, and you can, and you can adopt it. Adopt, we can adopt something at, at some point in November. We can, you can call it an interim or whatever, because you, because we are gonna have, board membership is gonna change. Uh, board chair will change, um, and there'll be a, there'll be a desire to kind of take a, take you out of, of, of look now. The downside of not putting something forward at least in, in place is that as everybody will recall. When new board members come on board. They need a period of time just to kind of watch what happens in these, in meetings and get a feel for how this whole thing. Functions and as that happens, then they become more comfortable and, and say, yes, we should work on this or we shouldn't work on this, okay? Um, and that takes a period of time, some people it takes as much as a year or maybe even longer, uh, to feel comfortable with that and others will be, it will be quicker. But then you just don't know, the dynamic and everything, so I always, I always thought it was a good idea. To have something that at least as the new board forms in December. That that board will have starting point and that, and that board can. Pair up the starting point, throw a trash can, start trash, or they can build upon that or do as, as a. Fit, but I think it's important to have, at least have something, um, so that there's a starting, starting point.
So adopt and then adapt.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
We're very process. What's the process?
The process?
From here going forward.
That, well, I just, that's what I was just kind of saying is that I thought.
I mean, we have a document here.
There's a document, yeah, so it's a, it's a, it's a, it's something that Jeff and I, uh, put together. In reflection of what he saw where the district was and what I saw where the priorities are, right, you know, and the thinking is. Um, and so you can provide input. In for this draft, Jeff and I would then take it. Put the input in, make the, make adjustments, we come back and have, have a robust conversation about it with our first, uh, meeting in November. And then see where we're at, yeah, that's kind of where, that's kind of where we are in the process.
So if we have ideas on this, just.
Then, yeah, yeah. That okay, I mean, that's, yeah, that would be great, that would be fantastic and. And, and I think that, that, that'll. That okay? I mean, that's, yeah, that would be great. That would be fantastic. And 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 I think that that that'll allow the current board at least to develop something where the new board that will come on uh up and running um in December, uh with starting point first and first step.
Yeah, and I think it'd be really important for this board to kind of really kind of almost lock in what you're, want your goals this year to be. Because with new members coming out, it's already going to be December. I don't know if you want to start shifting or or modifying goals. We already have a tactic through the, through the year. You all, you know, we all kind of come up with with what we want to see this year. New members kind of absorb it and then they help with the process for twenty-two, twenty-three. Just my two cents on that.
And the same question for sets and goals to Jeff. Do you want our feedback on that or if I'm basically final?
No, no, I I can take feedback as well uh on that uh too. But just under the premise that I'm, my core is around those four uh those four goals that we're working at as a, as a district.
And do we ever get to load on that or if they're just a.
I think we both, no, we both are mine, but on the Board of Ed.
Board of Ed.
Yeah.
So we don't approve yours? I thought we did.
The evaluation.
That was, okay, alright.
I have to go back and check, Joe. I don't think we did.
For some reason, I thought we did that, but.
Somebody, if somebody asked me, I would say yes, we do, but but uh we'll go back and take a look.
Yeah.
Last year was such a screw year, I don't remember.
You made it through that.
Okay, so anyway, so I mean, yeah, if people have uh, you know, suggestions, you know, like um particularly on the board goals that say, no, I don't think, I don't believe that we should be focusing on this or or this is just way too vague. Needs to be spelled out more specifically is exactly what we're going to do. That's fantastic. It's kind of.
Do you want some of those comments now or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we can.
At least at a high level.
Well, at a high level, yeah.
I mean, one thing I know for me, setting goals that that's helpful is just some plain language. You know, the way I think about it is like, what do I want to do this year? Like, I mean, you know, we can, we do need to put it more formally and and all, I I agree with that. But, you know, we say, hey, if we do A, B, C, D, that would be a really good year. But that, if we got those four things done, that would be really great.
And something to measure.
Yeah, and and so, so if if we can. Okay, I mean, I think I could talk to some of it. I don't know. I think there's a couple maybe that I couldn't, I don't have to go into those details right now. But I would like that, you know, if we can align on, you know, whatever those three or four things. I know these are categorized in five things, but like kind of plain language, um you know, like the recovery one is somewhat. But just, you know, Jeff and those cover this year. Kind of get that one. I don't know how we want to do that, but that's what I, you know.
I think so much of the board responsibility is to monitor, I mean, and have big discussions about the monitor, monitor and support the district's improvement plans. I mean, it's, and as as they, so and and as those improvement plans get more specific, which they did this this year, we will be able to judge how well we're doing as a, as better as a, as a district. And I think that's what's, that's what's important. Um, hope what you hope it's that basically a lot of the things that the board goals are are tied right into where the district's um goals are, you know.
Yeah, Joe. I'd like to second what he said because I look at this and it to me, I'm remembering that if I were being evaluated, my personal evaluation, it's always very concrete things that they can measure me against. It may be the business that I'm in, but I I kind of sometimes think. I don't feel, I could sit here and say sometimes I don't feel like I'm adding anything to the function of the school system except um. And, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking, I can't really look at or judge how I help, except I, I mean, I know I support the school at Stop and Shop if someone asks me. I mean, when we're out there in the community, I'm a staunch supporter or interacting with the teachers. I'm always very grateful for anything that they do. But I don't know, I just something, I just, once he said that, it made me think, I want concrete steps, but that's just the way I operate. You know, you do three million this month and then do, you know, two million this month. They're measuring, they're measuring me on numbers. So maybe this is not something we've ever done before. But just my opinion.
I think that would be why the board self-evaluation would be so important, so that we could understand how we can function more effectively and dynamically and be the ambassadors for the goodwill and the work that we're all working so hard to achieve.
Yep.
I mean, I'd love concrete steps.
So I, you know, so again, it can provide the input if if um if there are individuals who would like to, like to to meet with me as the app. Something like that too, to try to advance it and and bring it and bring more, you know, make it, make it more useful for for the coming, the coming days. So that would be great.
Think of plans.
I'm just thinking back to our, our, you know, extra meeting that we had last week and we were, we were looking at the role of the board members and stuff. And I I think that that needs to be kind of in front of us as we're talking about this. Because that role doesn't, as I read it, doesn't, you know, talk about a specific concrete. I mean, I know that I I I like to feel like, wow, we got the, you know, elementary school renovated. Well, that's a tangible thing, but some of that, some of our job doesn't fit into that tangible type of, you know, check the the box, like, well, you know, we fixed the baseball field, whatever it is, but, you know, and some of it is, it, and I, I just think I want to look at that as I'm looking at this. Make sure that we're sticking to what our job is.
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
I mean, I've gone on and read articles on on the cave uh site and I've talked to many people and so, and basically they always say it's just policy-driven. We're here to help develop, develop policy and to do that type of thing. And so maybe just backing away from it, maybe we don't need concrete goals. But I would sure like at the end of the year to feel like I've accomplished something. But again, I think let's do the committee and maybe we'll find out. I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, maybe we'll find out what we need just, and maybe we're, yeah, I would like to do the committee and explore it.
Well, I mean, you you generally always over the years kept a broader approach, you know, to your goals.
Yes.
I think is is an important place to stay and to be.
Hmm.
Um, so that, that's kind of my, you know, my, you said where we get into the deeper levels is with, you know, our, our staff or admin. Um, so um for, you know, for, for a deeper accountability component, I guess. Uh, so I get, I again, I keep all thinking different things when you look at this document. So it might not be a bad idea to kind of sit around the table and and uh, actually, I also made a note, you know, look at past Board of Ed goals. Let's take a look at the last couple of years. What did you create? Because they worked very well for you all. Um, you know, you talked about the school project, that was a big goal, redistricting. Uh, there were some big elements that you had as as goals that, you know.
Yeah.
You saw tangible success in it at the end from all the work that, you know, we all engage in to get there.
We don't want to micromanage. I just want to be sure we're not out there.
Yeah, that's.
That's an important point.
That's an important point uh with this. And there's where, you know, how you're structuring for me and your, you know, your goals. So at least do that broader approach.
Though uh, I mean. Uh, I'm open with um.
We what, we took some feedback and that might give us an idea of, you know, where we stand with.
Our meeting, we have a meeting on November.
Number eight.
Eight, I think it is.
Yeah.
And that might not be such a bad, a bad, bad topic to actually just spend a big chunk of the meetings having a conversation around board goals and and looking, spending more time as a group on on. Maybe it might be a good, it might be a good thing to do. Again, all I'm doing is thinking about what can we do in the month of November that prepares a a good starting point for the new board to come, comes on board in in December. And it will be, it will feel, it will look and feel different because there will be different people.
Right, that's definitely.
But it's still a helpful starting point technically. So I think you're, I think the adoption and then the adaption.
Yeah. Plus to that, it just, but bring, give feedback and.
Send some feedback, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll make sure that this will be a major, made one of the major topics for conversation um at the, that's important, yeah.
And send the feedback to Jeff.
Yeah, send it to me, yeah, and I'll, I'll kind of put it together and then. Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
Good. Hey.
Thank you.
Yep. Hey, let's see, yeah, move on to the Atlantic Center roof reports.
Yeah, so uh, very thorough um. That's a each report. Chris Lund has gone through, has been in contact with uh the uh Tecton, tech, Tecton Architects, which is a very reputable firm, um, you know that, sure. Chris, want to kind of give us the, the high-level view and uh then we can talk about more specifics in this document here, but I'll chance.
So. Drive here as well with us, refushe. So basically. And the report was attached, I believe, to the agenda. So you may have seen it, uh, you may not have, so I'll just go through some of it. Um, but as you all remember, we've discussed the roof interior a couple of times. Um, stem from some original corrosion issues. Uh, as we investigated, we found some structural concerns with the corrosion in there, so we want to address that before it gets any worse. Um, we had Tecton came out, they did an analysis of the roof and looked at some potential ways of doing the repairs to ensure that we have our roof last as long as possible and keep utilizing the system. So they're, basically they offer four solutions within the project and it's really two different ways of doing uh the same repair. One is to repair from inside the building and one is to repair from outside the building. So either screwing up or screwing down. And in addition, they would have us replace either a quarter of the purlins, which are the structural members holding the roof in place, or half, or the four. Um, so there's four different options using those basically two and two combinations of each. Um, when they originally provided that report, I asked them to go back and look at it because it suggested that, well, maybe we can just take all roof structure off. Unfortunately, when the roof was built, it was basically stitched together, knitted together, uh, gripped the seams. Whereas some of the systems now will allow you to take it back apart if you need to make some repair. So that was not an option. So we really were left to how to repair the roof in place without banning the whole roof, starting over. So of the four options, um, what I think is the best one is to repair from outside on top of the roof and to replace uh the half of the or partial, which is half of the purlins in there. Uh, my reasoning behind that is, uh, first of all, it's simpler to do it. Uh, if they were to repair from underneath, we'd have to tear down the insulation. It's going to be twice as messy, a lot more work. Uh, if you go from the top, easier to access, obviously, as well as we're going to drill straight down to new purlins or to the existing purlins. Um, most difficult part, of course, is making sure you identify where you're drilling, like you know, matter of measure twice, cut once, measure twice, drill once. So um, which is actually very simple. It's a, it's a very easy design, shouldn't be difficult to do that. Less destructive, should be a shorter duration as well. Uh, if you go into the inside, you're going to have to do a lot of staging, additional staging work to tear down the insulation. There will be some of that because we're going to have to take uh half of the purlins out or sister up next to it, which would be leave it in place with the other one next to it. That's one of the questions I have with them. And we are going to recode everything, so it'll be a lot of work, but ultimately it's easier doing outside. And I would suggest we do more rather than less planning on do that, because there is rust, corrosion on a lot of the members. And we say, oh, we're going to do a quarter of them, we're going to get out there, we're going to find out, well, now we're doing thirty percent, now we're doing thirty-five percent. So I think if we shoot for the upper level, we'll probably wind up there one way or the other anyway. So that was my solution or my recommendation based on their solutions that they provided. Um, their estimate for that particular solution is in the ballpark of seventy-five thousand dollars, which uh all of the recommendations that they provided, well, within our available funding, which is good. Uh, we do have one additional piece of funding and that would be the design proposal. We would have to negotiate that first. So what we're coming here tonight to talk about was to get uh your approval on pursuing a recommended course of action, which is the option that I suggested. Of course, the other options are, as mentioned, to attack it from inside, tear down insulation, go back up and do less of purlins than than recommended. So I'll open it up to questions.
And just so we have a hun, so there are a little over a hundred thousand down at the town uh for, that's been accrued. We spent seventeen on the study roughly. So it's around a hundred thousand. Cover the cost.
Thanks, Chris. I had a few questions. One is basic, what, so they gave both coming from the inside and the outside, but it sounds like no downside other than add your twice, girl wants from coming from others. Is there any reason we come, rather come from the inside than the outside?
Well, because we're going to be putting a lot of little micro holes in the roof by screwing through it. So what they do select will be a figure screw with a rubber stopper on it. And with U D, ultimately they will start to degrade. So there will be some continuous maintenance after a certain period of time. Just getting up there, checking for leaks and then sealing it. So we'll come call for something similar.
Okay. And then if I understood it right, we're doing half, well, we could do less than half, but we're doing about half.
It's a little less than half.
Little less than half. Is there a reason we don't need to do all or wouldn't do all or?
So. I don't think we have to take that thing out. If you were to go and look at it, you can honestly say, well, those are terrible.
Right.
They look okay. Um, and then there's a range in between.
Yeah.
So I think if you say, okay, we're going to do about half, I think we, maybe we take out a couple more that we really didn't need to, but rather err towards.
Yep. And then we just monitor the ones we replace for just constant, whether it's. And then the other ones, we have to keep an eye on that they don't start degrading and that we have to do.
Right, everything's getting re-coached too. So if we see anything start to rust through, we'll be able to get up there, take care of it, repaint it. So we don't see any more of that deterioration.
Just trying to understand.
Oh, Bill, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, Chris, on page six, you have um the partial roof pro, I'm going to say that wrong, purlin replacement. And it says seventy-four thousand and eighty-two thousand. Those two are broken out to two other options. So, so you have, but I'm trying to figure out which option are you suggesting, the seventy-four thousand one or the eighty-two thousand?
It's option number one listed there.
Okay, so the par- the partial roof purlin replacement fastened from the roof. Okay. Does it, I was trying to figure out what the difference was and it's the the self-ceiling or the roof replacement. So I was trying to figure out which one you were actually suggesting to us. Okay. No, that's it. Thank you.
Bill.
All right, so in the, in the second one, you're removing and replacing the information, insulation, and the first one, we're keeping the insulation? Is that uh the partial roof?
So page, page six.
Yeah, I'm looking at that same thing.
So both of those options, one is repair from the roof, one is repair from inside, but it's about half of the purlins.
But, but they're in the, in the one that we're replacing from the roof.
Right.
The insulation is staying.
Correct.
Um, and and I, just let me understand, is the purlin go below the insulation?
Yes.
The insulation is essentially supporting the roof?
So the panels are, is, were insulated panels. So they came with the uh code here to the panel itself. So in order to get to the clips, our home panel, and they have to cut the insulation out to redo the clips. And then of course, put new purlin out designated.
I'm sorry, the, the insulation came with the purlins attached?
No, uh, the panel, so the purlins are the structural members.
Yep.
And then the panels that are the roof material, the roof deck.
Yeah.
The insulation was adhered to that. So you have the long member and then the purlins attached this way under. So this was the roof surface. It's like a structural member.
Going through the insulation into the roof?
No, it sits on the purlin and then there's clips to, between the purlin and the roof member. I think there might be.
The, I'm looking at the illustration on on uh page five and it appears as though the purlin is underneath the insulation. with a fastener going through the roof into the purlin. And it's a Z-shaped light blue figure that sits on the framing member of the.
Okay, so on page five, can see that.
I'm sorry, it, it's page thirteen, depending on how you look at this document, on the bottom, it's the bottom right in the corner, it says five and parentheses. It's thirteen on the.
Yeah.
PDF dot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a PDF. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's confusing.
So the, the purlin is inside the building underneath the insulation underneath the roof? Correct?
No, so if you look at the document, you have, this is, this black line here.
Yep.
That's another structural member.
That's the, the big steel.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the purlin sits on top of that.
Correct.
And then the deck sits on top of the purlin.
So the insulation that we're looking, yeah.
The insulation is between the purlin and the outer shell of the roof.
Correct.
And then from there, it's.
Right. My point is, I'm, I don't understand how you're going to put a purlin in from the outside without ripping the roof and insulation off.
This is all, this is all free access space on the inside.
And, which means the purlin is being installed from the inside?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then drills down through.
So the only thing that's happening from the outside in the proposal one is that you're drilling the hole from the outside, but the purlins are all being installed from the inside? Okay, that's, that's where I was confused. How are you going to put this in there? When it's on the inside?
But, but the difference with that is if you go on the inside, instead of just drilling everything through, they're putting the clips in as well. So whereas on the outside.
So the, so the inside method doesn't require any holes in the roof?
Not through the roof, but we have to clip on.
Clip onto the, the, the structure that's in there?
Correct.
So the method that you're proposing is adding holes in, in our roof, which don't currently exist? I just want to make sure I'm understanding that, right?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm not sure that I'm in favor of that method personally.
Sure.
We didn't want to necessarily disrupt the insulation at all because the sample that they took, correct me if I'm wrong, they found that the top of the purlin or the insulation was in good shape. Right?
Some places.
Some was, okay, all right. Because we don't want to take the hose off, that's going to expense, so that was.
No, no, I understand that, but I, I, it, it either method is mine, and maybe I'm not getting this correct, neither method, we're going to put purlins in above the steel rafter, whatever we call those big frames that are supporting the building, and between the insulation and that steel member, we're going to put them in from the inside. The question is whether we're going to clip them to the steel member or whether we're going to drill holes through the outside of the roof.
Right.
And I don't, what, what I'm confused about is why it's more intrusive to put clips on the inside than to drill from your roof?
So what you have to do is you have to cut out the insulation along the back of the purlin, so you have this long strip like the purlin, where you pull out the insulation.
I thought they go underneath the insulation though.
Well, but in order to attach to the structural steel, you're going to have to take the insulation out, put a clip in. Because otherwise you'd have to drill all the way through the roof from the inside out to get some purchase on there. So what they do is they take out the insulation and they fix it on the structure on the inside that also.
When you say the structure, you're, now you're talking to the panel that's on the top. Okay, but the existing purlins are not attached to those roof panels?
They're attached, there's a clip on the panel, which is also attached to the purlin. So each panel is actually affixed to the purlin as well.
Okay. Somehow through the insulation?
Right.
From the inside?
When they originally put the structure together, so you put one sheet on and then you put that screw down into the purlin from that, and it puts onto the side, so it'd be sandwiched in between each of the adjacent panels where your clips are going to be. So they can be fixed, they're fixed this way to panels.
Okay, just, I'm just trying, I was just trying to understand how that all went together, yeah, it's still, so I don't like, so you do need to cut through the insulation in order to put the, the clip onto the, to the metal roof, not onto the structural member that's supporting the roof, but just the skin. So we're attaching that purlin to the skin from the inside, which is why we need to remove the insulation.
Right.
Okay. I thought they were just like, kind of floating underneath there to, to support the roof. Okay. Sorry, I'm, I'm someone who's interested in building. And I want to make sure I understand. All right, so still not excited about putting holes in the roof that we don't have holes in now, but.
What I did actually, because I was questioning the wall, really looking into it, there's lots of YouTube examples of standing seam roofs being put together. I think it's a good, a couple of good examples of how the clips are in and then of course how to prepare.
What kind of roof put together?
Standard seam.
Standard seam, okay.
Standing, sorry.
Standing seam?
Standing, so the seams stand straight up.
Standing seam roof.
So I have a question.
Sure.
I'm wondering the, it's not that old, right, is it, or was this?
It was old, it's twenty-three years old.
So that was the life expectancy of this roof? No, it wasn't?
Well, I mean, yes and no. The roof was not, not.
It wasn't installed.
Installed correctly, which led to a huge debate and discussion between contractor and building committee and a mound of being settled by the company contractor providing an additional.
At the time, it was about eighty thousand.
About eighty thousand.
Yeah, and it's grown.
And that money has sat down in Town Hall accumulating interest, whatever, now we got.
It was at a hundred and twenty? Yeah.
And so meanwhile, the roof has gone the slow deterioration, which has gotten to a point where, where we felt the first thing to do was to fix the humidification, de-humidification system, get the air right, which we did. Now, we want, now what we want to do is, is fix the roof, so it, 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 it will, it does not have this deterioration phenomenon, which drops little rust particles into the pool. And so that's why we hired Tekton to come in and take a look at these various options. So that, that's kind of that a very large scale, that, that's what it is. So the idea is, is the, is, I believe, Chris, is, is that with whatever the fix is that you're recommending, we're hoping that we would get a substantially, another long period of life for the roof.
And so.
And quality.
No, a lot of the metal roofs, standing seam roof manufacturers, when you put it on, it'll tell you it's a fifty-year roof for long. So I think we would extend it to that original fifty-year life.
Which would be great, it's dried out in there, and they did notate that on the first page, which is good, they said the de-humidification system, you know, they found good climate condition, so the system's doing what it needed, and we put that in four years ago?
Yeah.
Four, five years ago. Yeah, so, because it was so wet in there, dripping, and that's obviously caused all the rust. But now it's fixing the rust in the roof, hopefully, yeah, we're good for another twenty-five, thirty years maybe.
I think you have.
So the new purlins have a better coating on them as well than they, than the existing ones? I see marine coating to the, to, to fix the old ones, there somehow we're going to coat those.
Yeah, I don't know what the original coatings were, but it's the, that's what the spec coating is today for the aquatic center interior roof. I think one of the other problems that they had with the original roof, and one of the things that was part of settlement is they installed the purlins and as they put the roof on, they drilled through with galvanized fasteners and the galvanized, it came off most of the fasteners as well as damaged a lot of coatings. So the intent with this is after everything's been.
One of those pictures, I'm assuming that you showed is a screw coming through that it rusted, so that came from the outside of the roof, so we already have put some holes in our roof.
I think that was in the original installation, but.
Okay.
But in this case, you know, the intent is to put the recode over the top of the purlins after all the screws are in as well, so you get a good final
With the exception of the, the surface that currently exists between the top of the purlin and the insulation that we're not removing, we're not going to be recoating that because we don't have access to it. And you said that was inspected in some way and that, that.
They did some destructive testing in a couple of areas where they actually cut out insulation, so they could see what was.
Because to me, that seems like where there would be a fair amount of rust, right? Yeah, I, to be quite honest, I'm a little nervous about this project. I, I, I don't feel great about the either plan. I think we're going to have some issue down the road. I, I wish, I wish that we, I mean, I've done a lot of roofs in my time, and I know when you put hole, extra holes in roofs, it's generally not a good idea. I'm, I'm familiar with the rubber fasteners and stuff and I, I I don't know. And, and I'm a little interested in what does that fastener look like as it goes through the roof, through the insulation into the, the purlin, so is it a self-tapping fastener that is going to ultimately pick up the purlin? Does it have an additional fastener on the inside of it? Are we crushing these? I mean, what does that look like?
That's still something to be figured out within final design, but.
So this hasn't, this hasn't been done anywhere else before? This is that someone, some engineer's creative solution to fix our roof?
It may be, I don't know.
Okay, all right, I just.
That's a question.
That's a good question. Anyway.
They know what they're doing, that's for sure.
Now we can ask them if they should have done that.
Would time, well.
So from, there's no urgency.
Answer to the time, right?
But in answer to the, the question about timing, the urgency is not the roof falling in, it's the urgency is potentially the roof being uplifted.
Oh.
So because of the fast, the fasteners, a lot of them are damaged. So that, I wouldn't worry about it sucking off, but.
Oh my god.
But in terms of the urgency of, of taking action on this, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of thinking, because I'm sitting here, I'm, I'm now substantially confused as well. Would it be possible to have a representative from Tekton come and maybe convene an FFO so, right? An FFO meeting and, and invited, invited board members that particularly have high interests.
I'm sorry, I, I wanted to go home tonight too, but this is, this makes me nervous.
I just, and I'm, I'm just sitting back and I'm thinking about, we just renovated three elementary schools and we had the mold problem in the library at Little B Haynes, and, and, you know, it's just one of these things where, you know, you know, and, you know, it, you know, to take them, to take some more time to make sure we all, we all understand, or a subset of us fully understand the pluses and minuses of, of going down this path. So that if, if we go down a path, it would be that, that we, we really bump this, so.
Yes, I, I.
Is there also someone maybe from town that has experience? Or John Root?
Yeah, from Little River, Ray O'Connor?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I.
Oh, Bill, I, I, it's great, I, I, I think it seems like maybe having a few people.
No, no, I, I welcome, I welcome some voices, I just think, you know, and I, I, trust me, I think you, you have been doing fabulous work and I love all these pictures and I don't, I, and I know that you're, you're trying to get a million different things done, I'm just thinking, to me, this doesn't look like a twenty-year solution to buy twenty more years out of it. I, I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong.
They said they'd be glad to come in already.
Yeah.
Can I also suggest we do a field trip? I mean, maybe I would real, I'm very visual, I'd like to see this.
Well, I think there's some great pictures right here, but yeah.
Well, okay.
Yeah, but, yeah, no, they're right though, so.
Let's, let's.
Everything done this winter. We have some other scheduled maintenance for next summer, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, this would be a summer project. We want to, we want to paint the bottom of the, paint the pool.
We don't want to interrupt any sports seasons.
No, we could get a, you know, with Chris, Bill, I don't know.
I think.
John or somebody.
Do it, I think, do it under the FFO.
Yeah.
Subcommittee, and then have invited, invited guests or whatever, for the real and experts.
Yeah, so let's, let's do that, I think that would, that would make, that would certainly make us all feel a lot better.
Yeah.
And I tell you, pools are, you know, pools are tough things because it is an extremely corrosive environment. And, yeah, yeah, and I think that would be a launch, so.
And we don't want the roof falling in nor blowing off.
Yeah, hopefully it'd be very bad.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's look for.
Retractable.
Find out the whole meeting and, and get them out, Tekton out here, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris.
Maybe I'm making it more.
If I were to look at this, look at this, can I call you and meet with, you can show them at the pool?
Sure.
Okay.
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 Yeah, Rob.
Okay.
So.
I'll get Rob a call.
Got two more, a couple more things here we go, so let's go, let's see. Pool sign to rename.
Yeah, this would be pretty quick, Jamie and I were having a quick conversation, looking at the outside of the the pool sign that's kind of there, it's been there twenty-three years, and just like to take a look at it and yeah, and that, it's got nutmeg on there, Jack, it's gone now, and I think it's time to just kind of take a look at that sign and, and maybe create something, something new. So, pretty simple, no rush, you know.
So are you on that committee?
We.
Have you already formed it?
No, we haven't formed yet, but we can talk, Jill, definitely, I can, I can reach out and.
Okay.
But absolutely, you can join on, definitely.
So we need to make a motion?
Yeah.
Form.
Someone?
You are?
Yeah.
Yeah, superintendent will.
I'll take the, yeah.
Yeah.
Any, any more discussion on this item? Okay, all those favor the motion, super other thing, I. Anybody vote? Really want to change? Passes? And last item under this series of topics, a delegate assembly. Has everybody received?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a delegate assembly where each of the items that are in here will undergo a discussion period and then ultimately will be voted on to be part of the act that goes forward, resolutions of them since the state. In the past, Jamie and Candace have volunteered to participate in this, I think certainly as our cave liaison now signed, Jamie is, has already signed up by attending, I think this is, so.
So.
I believe so, and then Jill was asked also to participate, and that's fine. People are welcome to anybody else, if anybody else wants to participate, it's kind of a neat learning.
I would suggest if you plan on going to do so immediately to sign up because, hey, convention has already filled up and they have a waitlist for that. So if you've not signed up for convention already, you will be signing up during the waitlist. So if you want to go and delegate, I would suggest signing sooner rather than later, I don't know what their path is.
Yep, so anyway, but that's, that's kind of the process. And with respect to. the blue book, if people have anything that they read and they sit, they want to pass along into, uh, Jamie, uh, please do, please, please do so, and then we will put this on, we'll put this on the November eighth meeting.
Especially if there's any- I'm just saying, cause it's the eleven.
Yeah, yeah. That you have an opportunity to have a conversation. Okay? Alright, uh, move on, we have a, uh, under policy, we have second review, uh, policy thirty-three twenty purchasing, uh, here. Uh, yeah, no, for, no.
No.
This was, um, from the audit, um, it was, Maryana wrote, uh, a policy up to reflect what we are being asked to do from the federal government and the state government to reflect actual, um, like, some of it is, some of it's town, I keep pushing the wrong button, um, some of them is, um, side also, so you can be somewhat in line with what their policies and policies are.
Second, please, so. Oh, wanna make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to suggest revision of order of policy thirty-three twenty purchasing.
You want a second, second motion?
Okay.
Thank you, Kate. Um, discussion?
Well, you said that it's in alignment, Jamie, but-
I said it's in somewhat of an alignment of counts. It's more of in line of what our policies, what we are practicing, what the law it asks us to do.
I can't, yeah, this, this time always passes, I remember the, uh, wings and some stuff, was this actually, this was actually triggered by- It was triggered with an audit and concerns that Mariana had, Mariana restructured the entire purchasing policy, um.
It's really-
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, you know, a couple differences from the town, one, one B, uh, dollar amounts of, you know, uh, when fiscal responsibility was, and like, for instance, that was in Ibrigade Board, um, so, so those are a little bit different from the town, is one example, but, um, we really hope this was a stronger policy for us.
No, it looks good, um, I just know that purchase orders are required in town for anything greater than twenty-five hundred, and then things need to go to bid at fifty thousand or more, so, um, anyway.
Yeah, we, we have some of those numbers in there too, um, how can I, uh, if I remember, but they are in there, like, you know.
Well, our bidding process starts at ten thousand.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Goes up from there, where you have to do, you know, the whole process for the higher, higher reflected numbers, twenty thousand and more, formal competitive proposals process, twenty thousand more, yeah. So basically twenty thousand more is full process.
Good, anybody else? Dave, so we have a motion, uh, our favorite motion, so everybody let's say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Oh, me, yes. That's it for discussion action items for the evening.
I say question about policy, yeah, sure, there's a, Jamie, but, um, there's a policy meeting tomorrow that's, uh, it's an executive session, it's meeting, which everyone doesn't.
Yep.
Looked at the, uh, the thing and there are, it lists like, from A to Z, all our policies, and there are like, yeses and whys and nens. Next, so, um, when you get done with that, is, uh, that mean that everything that's a Y is going to be, uh, accepted as policy and everything is an N, means going to be rejected as policy?
One, you can't accept, you can't. In a policy meeting, we can't vote on policy? We can only suggest what comes to the board?
So everything's gonna come out of that meeting if there are any action items that, uh, like any whys.
You can't take any action, so what's gonna happen, if you would like to come to the executive session, you can, you just can't participate. Any board member can come to the executive session, policy meeting, you just can't participate, you're not on the committee. So if you'd like to come, you're more than welcome to join, you just can't participate if you're not in the committee.
We're doing the whole, yeah, return to client.
I'd like to come, but I can't, yeah.
So it, it, Jamie, I mean, so basically, it's, we're discussing which policies need to be worked on and which ones are okay.
I am going to assume that's what the attorney would like to talk to us about, I didn't get an exact vote from the attorney, what she wants to talk about. She just said that she wants to do it. She wants to go into the attorney's client, yeah, in the session and discuss it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I asked the question, can other board members come, and she said, yes, they just can't participate if they're not in the policy.
Okay, good. Okay, administration reports. A couple items, um, someone, hopefully you saw the big mound of dirt sitting out in the middle of our baseball field. Um, the ink was even drying that contract and off they were, they were, you know, starting to run, which is great because there's a time, I think I read November nineteenth, Chris, or around that night.
I talked to the, the superintendent today, he's, he's more confident that they'll be off the field, grassy down by, yeah.
Which would be great, yeah, especially if we're having a warmer October, November, so, um, so that's super, so, uh, that, that project is underway, which is good.
Um, the, sorry, the irrigation's going into, well, yes.
They're digging down right now and I think, I don't know.
They were still busy when I got here at four fifteen.
Yeah, that was a full day.
They're doing the irrigation fields, now working with the town water department to get the water to connect here.
Yeah, that's a nice thing.
Yeah, so we'll keep you posted on, uh, that, um, budget workshops, you saw in my update, we've got a tentative of November seventeenth, uh, for the first budget workshop, and then December twentieth for the second one, so one's a Wednesday, then November's a Wednesday, and the twentieth of December is a Monday, obviously, we'll go through the same process, we'll invite, you know, board of finance, um, so all the budget documents are, are out to the, uh, principals, um, got our scheduled events, we're still waiting for all the town information, that's the one those are gonna take place, obviously, but, um, but that process is underway and, uh, let us have team, we'll be here before we know it, it's been the first, uh, first budget workshop.
And we'll wanna make sure that, um, for those, uh, who will have been elected to board, um, but not yet sworn in, that, that they're, they are, warmly, warmly, warmly heard.
Very warmly.
Get all the necessary materials.
Well said. Um, definitely. Um, enrollment update, uh, we hadn't shared some enrollment information, so hopefully you saw that in the weekly update, um, if you're not ready to take a look at that and where our numbers are, um, questions, let me know. Um, staffing issues, um, Kim had put it in her weekly update Friday, we are continuing to have some pretty significant staffing issues, I'm gonna point to the before and after school programs, um, we lost two more, uh, folks today, um, Mariana and myself and Annalisa and Kim, you know, it's talked, we need to up, uh, the hourly rate that we're paying for those, right now it's sitting between thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour, um, we can't find people and people that leave, we're gonna have to close the programs, if we don't get some staff. And that could happen as early as the beginning of next week, if we don't get things filled for, by, by very soon.
Okay.
So, um, this plant, you know, one of the schools don't have plants, will have, uh, some, some folks available, so, we're working diligently on that, it just, the, the, the people aren't out there, but if we up the rates, maybe we can draw in some of our professionals, some current staff members.
Just you raise the rate for the other, you're raising it for everyone, because we can hire, we can hire an hourly rate, and one of them less.
Yep, yep, you've got, uh, and you've got two different scales, you got, I had, uh, I personally, managers, exactly, so we have to up the rate.
A lot of higher rate.
Yeah, there's just no other way around it, so we have to, uh, put those, um, up around, uh, you know, over where the pairs are making to incentivize tickets to people, and so we're concerned about that, so we can post it there, um, and then, uh, for the Little Beach Hanes, you just mentioned, you know, the library, um, we want, Chris and I and Mariana, we're talking about bringing that potentially to the building committee, uh, as, you know, to seal that floor this summer, a- as a project, there's still some dollars left there, um, to ask them, you know, maybe on that. So that's, you know, we're looking at, yeah, and-
How much did the contingency area go?
There was a hundred and seventy thousand that was, that was left. So, um, and then that might fluctuate a little bit, the boiler, Chris, I, I don't know if that, there was forty-seven thousand, including boiler, I don't know if that was, you know, beyond the one seventy, or it was part of the one seventy?
I think that was, uh, one seventy, so, that was after that, okay, alright, so, should be right around that one seven mark.
So, um, so stay tuned, uh, you know, that, that, I don't know what a cost on that, you know, would be, we have to get a cost, probably have to come to the board of it first. Um, and I also might talk about some beans cafeteria tables, um, we're, we've got some very old cafeteria, we talked about it that a little bit back when the project's underway, uh, you know, three, four years, four years ago, but they're in worse shape, there's, we, we need a handful of those tables that we need to replace. So we need to buy them, you know, on our own, um, or potentially reach out to the projects again and say, hey, what do you think about me purchasing, you know, eight tables? They've got a total, Melissa, how many totals do you have? Eight?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, so we bought half at least, that might help, they're breaking, they're dangerous, they're in really rough shape, and they've been keeze mail back together.
How, how much does a table cost?
Fourteen, fourteen hundred dollars per table, it's, if you buy, if you buy eight, if you buy less than eight, then it's sixteen hundred dollars, correct? I think it's, yeah, so, um, that's what we'd be potentially looking at, but I, it doesn't hurt to ask the building people, we'll see. Um, so just wanted to keep an eye on that. And then, um, lastly, um, the, uh, Wednesday, if you're, you're interested, John Broderick's coming, uh, on this Wednesday, you saw that information, um, you know, former, he's right now with Dartmouth Hitchcock Senior, Senior Director there at Internal Affairs, and former New Hampshire Supreme Court Chief Justice, who has a pretty miraculous story, uh, on mental health with his, uh, his son and what he went through, um, it was pretty impressive, I was at a conference, so I asked, and we had set this up for, before COVID, and it fell apart, and now he's still with that, so hopefully he can make it. Yeah, please do, yes, Wednesday, this week, uh, at three in high school authority, speaking to students as well, Wednesday morning, too, so.
And so, that's it, I have.
Ready for me?
Yeah.
Feel like I talked a lot already. Aren't you tired of hearing from me? Um, no, as I had put in my update last week, we had teachers come together to, um, you know, give the standard space report card one last look with the consultants as we move into our draft year of, um, making that shift, I know it went in front of the parent advisory group in the spring, we're gonna bring that back to them again, um, this week, just as an update, um, I'm looking for some parent feedback on the guides to make sure that the guides we sent home to parents are actually what they need to understand the report card, so try to recruit some members, um, okay, great. Um, and then, uh, met with the, um, curriculum fellows and instructional leaders last week and, um, really started to, um, I, I have them all working on action plans related to their, um, core content area, as it relates to where they are in the curriculum revision process this year, so, um, that's gonna help me drive my decision-making for budget and, um, sort of get out ahead of what the departments will need as it, as it relates to where they are in cycles. I'm really excited about that work. Um, and I can't remember if I put in my update, I know I had said that the clear touchboards were here for the high school, um, but we are still working on developing some, um, training modules for teachers, so we estimate that it will take about six hours of training to properly train our teachers on those clear touchboards. So we're gonna do that in three two-hour sessions, the first two will be done, um, probably between now and the, um, and, uh, before we go off for a winter break, I know that sounds like a long time, but when you're trying to get departments of ten in and there's a sub shortage, it takes time. Um, so, and then do sort of more in advanced training at our full-day PD in March. And so, um, we're, I'm working with Deb, I'm trying to figure out a schedule that is, um, least intrusive to the school's, school day schedule, but also provides the opportunity for teachers to get the PD they need to successfully implement the course. As of right now, their technology that they had is still in their rooms, none of that will come out until the, the, they've been fully trained and fully transitioned and using the course.
Direct.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, how did the learning hub?
Oh, the learning hub, oh my gosh, it went really well. I, I don't know how I forgot, so it's so funny because now we're talking about the hub and things that will be put up in the hub for teachers, so it's becoming a thing, it's really exciting. Um, we have some feedback, I can put in my next update some feedback from teachers, um, that they gave us, but, uh, it went really well, we had a little scavenger hunt for teachers to utilize to start to become more acclimated with the use of the hub. We asked for their feedback, what's still not there that you'd like? The instructional pathways committee, that will be their work this year, is to look at that feedback over the course of the year and, um, and make adjustments to the hub in relation to what teachers are looking for.
And now that's, um, is that on our website or is that on their, their-
That's a, it is, it's a Google site and you have to have any LPS, um, uh, email to access the hub, yeah, so, yeah, so it, it went really well, um, and we can, you know, find some time that I can give you guys a tour of the hub.
Love it.
That would be great, yeah, so I'll, I'll, we'll find a time, um, that works, you know, with the schedule and-
Maybe an A, it's a waiting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 so, so far so good, I, I know it's here to stay, um, the big message to staff are that this isn't, you know, like, do the hub in a year, right? It's, it's about what are, what are your needs and, um, making sure that the resources are vetted on, in research base and they're in one place for teachers to go to access, so, um, you know, there's just so much content over there, out there, that can be not great and, um, and or not grounded in research and, and aligned to what we believe here on Eastland Public Schools, so. It's very exciting, I can't wait to show you.
Wow. Yeah, demonstration of the clear-
Oh, the clear touchboards?
Boards, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, is that where we have to go somewhere, or is it like, actually bring it here?
No, we can, we can roll. Yeah, um, yeah, I'm wondering, actually, yeah, um, you want the, 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 that's from to the whole board demonstration?
I'd love to see it, okay.
I'm gonna, we're, have technology, it's good to see what group that's in.
Yeah, it's a powerful tool, it's more powerful than I thought it was going to be, the clear touchboard, it's exciting, yeah, it's exciting, but it also does provide or it does require a significant amount of training, so teachers really know how to use it.
That was really cool.
Oh, just one quick question on that, sorry, so when you write on it, it's gonna project that everybody's laptops, is it like for people's laptops, or is it?
So you can write notes on it, that can be saved and shared out, um, you can copy paste from your, whatever's on your screen can be shown on that script, on the screen of the-
Great, I, I'd love to see that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, I mean, there's a lot of stuff to, to, yeah.
I'm trying to work on the question of towards what end?
Yes.
You know, and I went through the slow improvement plans and there were multiple, multiple, uh, possibilities there. I know that, uh, when you're working with your curriculum committees and you're working with your coaches, someplace in your dialogue and discussion, there has to be a uniform or a singular or a constant towards what end or outcome that the language that you're using. If you could just let us know if that word or phrase is, because it's, uh, the problem I'm having right now is like, we make suggestions, you know, I'm using this thing, it's like, oh, well, that's kind of over there, but that's not what we're doing, it's like, okay, well, that's how we're doing it. So it's kind of like a guessing game, to figure out like what it is, the, uh, the uniformity or the constant that you and your curriculum committee, your teachers are using, so if we get, uh, knowledge of what that, that, that outcome is, that, uh, we could then start to get into discussions, uh, with our own documents of towards what end we're trying to work with in the district, does that make sense?
It does, are you talking specific to blended learning or just an instructional focus?
Of course, like, you know, uh, you use a term last session about cross-cutting?
Yes.
You know, so is it agencies, is it executive skills, is it the core competencies, is it meta cognition?
So what's the thing, what's the?
What is the, the thing that you're about, is it self-initiated, self-sustaining learning, is it, uh, you know, there, there's a constellation of terms that get thrown around.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wanna make sure that in our documents that, as we work on stuff, we are in concert and
Right.
alignment with the word that you're, or the phrase that you're using.
Yeah, I, I will do my best, I'm, I am struggling with just one phrase on the thing, um, you know, because we're grounding our work around what we know as quality education, which is our instruction, which is not just one thing.
Correct.
Um, so-
It's the end, which instruction is-
Yeah. Yeah, but maybe we can have a further conversation around it, we can talk it through and, and, you know, I, I just, I want, I, I don't want to pinhole ourselves to just. One.
You see, it's not pinhole, because if you look at the research, the, you know, the greatest return on learning. Comes with focus on any one of those constellation of things called like meta cognition or agency and it's, it's not a pigeonhole.
And those, like in the, in the learning hub, we have modules on student agency, how to increase student agency in the classroom.
So is that?
But it's not just the one thing in there.
Something like agency, there has to be something that's cross cutting, that's like. Encompassing, like everything, that as you're doing math, English, reading, whatever, that as they're doing their content, there's something that you're trying to develop in the students. You know, and if it's agency, we can use agency, man, I'm comfortable with that term, but I don't want to go down that pathway with, you know, the kind of stuff we're talking in the board, if that's not a term.
No, and I appreciate that, I appreciate what you're saying, yeah, let me, let me think on it, Barry, and. See if I can come up with the one thing, I would want to engage the teachers in this conversation, too, but.
Go back to it, you know, again, it's, it's not a pigeonhole term, it's a very universal.
I mean, I would say it's, it's all, it's centered around high quality research-based instruction, the, the practices that we know work.
Those, pipeback instruction, if you look at what is the outcome of that? You know, there's always a tend, which not just the content, but there's something else that that instruction is developed. You know, and it's, it's kind of implicit in what you're doing.
Right.
This, you know, person transparency, I want to make it explicit so that when we talk about stuff, we are in line with what you are doing.
Yep.
Not using a term over here and then having you say, well, we can't pay attention to that because we're doing this. If they just want to get alignment with what you're doing.
Okay.
And then, just a second, I just wanted to emphasize the point I made earlier about the testing.
Yeah.
That those documents, the limitations of the category one, two, three are maximum. You know, because of the standard, the more we can take off those charts, the more you can move away from. Level one, two, three, four, to working on the continuous scale of growth and how students are, where they are working on their growth target. You know, I mean, that is a much more psychometrically solid and effective way to design curriculum. Than it is to try to deal with the level one, two, three or four. So the more that you could take the one, two, three, four off those documents and use that fifth column you had on one of those sheets where you had the growth targets. Well, they're matching their growth targets.
Right.
I think that's, that would be a great, great accomplishment if you did that.
Gotcha.
It's gonna be hard to do because you've got so much invested, we want to report.
As a state, you gotta get the state to change that there.
Working on it. Every time I have a discussion, they say that's where we should go, but they're so dealing, you know, the, the residue of no trial left behind. You can go all the way back to Alpha for day, go to the Alpha Army, Alpha and Alpha Beta test, IQ test, there's this colossal belief that you can come up with a one figure. You know, all the people that have the right stuff with that one number. And the growth potential is very individualized, it's very dynamic, you know, and it's personalized to like where you are, what you're doing and how you have to get to the same level. Very into the, very, the state recognizes that, they say every time we go there, the districts push back on us like. We want that one, two, three, four category. We could be real leaders in the state if we could.
Yeah. Something, something to think about.
Sounds like you can move that way. Um, I just wanted to share that I had gone to Indigenous People's Day, that was a phenomenal opportunity and. I got an extra set of resources for it, the interesting thing is that we have people who live in this area who are direct descendants of people who. Were here, I don't know, a couple hundred years ago, I guess, and so they are willing to be part of our programs that possible to do what.
Excellent.
And because they're burial grounds or sacred grounds, the whole story of, of the hand taken, my hand taken, all of that is phenomenal. And nice set of resources that are available through the library that we can access for our students, you know, it's, it's, it's relevant, it's us, and then they're kind of the invisible population as far as. Nobody really kind of reaching out to them and they have really high suicide rates and there's some real concerns and issues with that, but. Beautiful stories that were told in their respect for their ancestors is just phenomenal, but I just wanted to.
Thanks so much for bringing that, appreciate it.
All right, so that brings us now, I think, to the reports. We did have, there was a triple A, maybe.
Everything was covered.
Covered it all, so. More test scores? All right, and then we got a policy meeting that we'll talk about tomorrow at four, so let's do it. Board comments and future agenda topics, anybody?
I have a comment.
Agenda topic.
I just have a comment, in the op ed section of the New London Day on Saturday, it was Sunday, there was an article about boards of Ed. And I just, I'd like to have it read into the minutes because I think it's so important, it addresses basically how the makeup of boards of Eds are changing. And how the board of Ed meetings are also changing, and I think it's something. I don't know, I watch a lot of news, so I just think it's something important and I'm gonna give it to Jackie or get a copy of it to Jackie and have it read into the minutes.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to take it, Jill, too, if you want.
I trust you.
I'm just gonna get our.
You guys, Kate?
Well, I had an opportunity to meet or hear, have a lecture from Dr. Lindsay Rush, and she's the one who's responsible for. Outreach for the living, the giving garden that's just across the street.
Oh, yeah.
And she would be really interested, you know, they just did a phenomenal job, the second year of this operation, they were able to harvest three thousand pounds of food and then donate it to United Way.
Oh, wow.
And I just think it's such a great opportunity that we have our, one of our elementary schools here, one of our high schools here, or our high school here, and. That there might be some real, what do you like to say, Barry, like real applied learning and opportunities for our, our students to get their hands in the soil and. Like the coastal connection kids, just not really. We don't want anybody younger than. Thirteen, I think is what they said, so it'd have to be maybe upperclassmen or kids at the high school level for starting out at this point, but. I would really like to see perhaps have her come and put it on an agenda item down the road, that would be something that we could develop a relationship with.
Do you have any other information, you know, go through this, send it my way.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah.
So I would like to say that as much as I enjoy our meeting, getting out very early. I have had a lot of complaints from the people in my town that they would like us to go back to a pre-pandemic time at seven o'clock. Because it's a more friendly time for families. To be able to get here and to be able to watch our meetings online. Is early for a lot of families, they're not open work, they're still trying to struggle with dinner. A lot of complaints have come to me about the time and going back to how it used to be. I'm putting it out there.
Or do you go the other way, like water, who went to five o'clock?
Yeah.
Do it before dinner.
Well, a lot of people are in their homes from work at five o'clock.
Too, yeah, yeah, it's interesting, it's.
So, I'm just letting it be known, I've had a lot of people come to me, I mean, I like getting home by eight thirty, but a lot of people, we have the biggest budget. We have. Because of staffing, we have the biggest money that people talk about control, they would like to be able to get here if they can, it don't feel like we are being people friendly by doing it at the six o'clock time.
Are they using Zoom too, or the options?
No, I, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, what I've heard, what I've had come to me.
Jamie, why don't you have them contact or at least email maybe Jeff, so we know, you know, so he can have a conversation with a couple of them and just really understand. Or do you think they're too, I think that would be something uncomfortable for them?
I'm just, are, are we traditionally been seven o'clock, all the towns and the boards and the committees in the town are seven or later? So they would just like us to be friendly like the town is.
I heard the same thing, and I brought that up last year, too.
Yeah.
They would just like us to be more friendly to the people in the town and go back to being. Friendly with our time.
Okay. Good, anybody else?
I was, is it, final observation, if you looked at that listing of the clubs, you saw that the vinecraft club is four or five.
Oh, really?
They went out there like ninety students are in it, they had like three sessions.
Wow.
It is, as we said before, it's very, very dynamic program. And having a club is good, there are also instructional components, there's a science component in it, there's a math component there, there's an English component in it, there's a history component. If that could be integrated into our curriculum, it's not that hard to do, and because of the popularity of it, it would be a great way within the blended learning programs. To really build upon students' interest in, in using this and it's, the modules are really, really good. It's just, it's something else, I mean, the address is up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Good. Um. Yeah, I think, yeah, I would like to.
Executive session, so with that, I think we'll just take a brief recess and come back to go into the executive session for the purpose of. Personnel budgetary matters.